Start by a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The next regular meeting is scheduled for Friday, June 23, 2017, at 9:00 a.m. at the Island View Restaurant, 354668 Tea Time Circle, Sebring, Florida. Please silence or turn off your cell phones. Consent agenda. The minutes of the regular meeting, budget workshop, and Deer Run Tea Project are Friday, May 12, 2017, and Friday, May 26, 2017, Treasurers' Report, and Golf Financials. May I have a motion to approve?
I still move. Second.
Questions?
Any comments up here?
Yes, I have a few.
Okay.
Okay. A couple on, I don't know if this is working, just a couple. Just a little clarification on the Treasurer's Report. And this might be standard practice. I was just wondering, do we normally provide physicals for employees? Or does that come under their normal insurance? Or am I misreading something here?
Physicals are provided as a wellness benefit.
Okay.
But we have required physicals for our outside staff in this past six months. So we do have a, we did provide physicals, but I believe it is part of a wellness benefit as well.
Okay. I wasn't sure. I hadn't seen it before, so I didn't know if that was a regular thing. And I have a couple of questions on the Golf Financial Report, a real quick one. Jim, on page six, you have a comment in here, and I know Kay is going to be taking over some responsibilities and her expanded membership while I'm working with Andy to further develop our Membership Referral Program. Do you?
Where do you go?
Start again, Mark.
I'll try this again. Did you catch that, Jim, when you were out there? Okay. I have just a quick question on the financial, on the report here. Under page six, you have, and I am aware that Kay is going to be taking over some new responsibilities and working with Andy, and it's to further develop our Membership Referral Program. Can you elaborate on what you see her doing differently than what we're currently doing?
Um, really much so. Approximately 75 percent of your new members come from new members. So what we're really looking to have Kay focus on is the extra touches with stay in place. This year, considering the first year, I handled all the inquiries and dealing with the people for coming up to stay in place. Kay will help me doing that, and we'll have more time to give to that. It wasn't necessarily about this thing, but Bill and Tim Johnson showed more of an interest in the club, so I involved Kay with working with kids and making her more comfortable. And she was also looking to do more things like play cards and touch the bat, and they resulted in games that we call this person. So just different initiatives. You know, Supervisor McCullough had a great idea of just reaching our new members in our newsletters with, you know, pictures and descriptions. Kay reaching out. So we would take about $6 a week, just the population, for her to be with Bud this time and there for her to work with stay in place. We will follow up with new members, follow up with members who have joined, just to make sure that they're getting experienced enough and they're getting activated the way you want. And then just try to basically expand from there. So that's a big difference. We really didn't have anyone, you know, dedicated specifically. Any dollar was our membership person, but that was more of a loyalty role. And so they agreed, you know, they'll be handling that payment and so forth. But, you know, we did recall Kay, our Director of Personnel, she actually--
She's excellent. You couldn't have had a better selection. I mean, she's perfect.
We just kind of expand her role to try to make that bigger and approximately $6 a week, pretty much a staff schedule. You know, and that's pretty normal, you know, for clubs, there are a lot of memberships that are, you know, in a big market, they have somebody, you know, $40 a week working all of those. So that's a great question. We could perhaps expand on that kind of something.
That's excellent. It really is. The only other thing is, I do have a question, and it pertains to the Budget Workshop coming up, and I don't know if you can do this. The district has, in their financials, they have the ability to break out each and every department. And within those departments, they break out, under labor specifically, they break out their various employees, they'll say, like, in the case of security, security will say, "We have eight part-time people. We have this, we have that." Under your program, and I'm not sure you can even change this, you can't break out specifically the labor by departments. What you do is you break it out as a lump sum towards the organization versus by department. Is there the ability in the CAFSP financials, so when we're doing the budget, we can look across the line and say, "Okay, this is, we have six people or eight people in the pro shop, and out of those eight people, this is how it kind of breaks down a little percentage-wise"? Is that possible?
Oh, definitely, yeah. We can expand on that in different ways. So Will, I can do that one in our organizational part, I just took big numbers. And one of the things, I wouldn't say it's, but one of the things that is challenging is with CAFSP, there's a line or requirement to be, there's a CAFSP employee that hits a certain set of benefits, which is based on being working $39 a week, $40 a week or more. And then as an active employee, if you work $1,500 a year, then you're also a part of that. So it's a little bit confusing, but we'll, you know, we'll have more information to have to understand that. So when someone, you know, is working $1,600 or $1,700 a year, so they're averaging about $33 a week, you're still classifying them as part-time if they're semi--
And I'm not looking for the details on the individuals as much as I'm trying to understand. In the summertime, we have part-time. For an example, so you allocate labor for part-time out on the golf course, and I just, you might have six or eight new part-timers, and you allocate X dollars for that. This kind of gives us a little, at least it gives me, a little better look at how we're breaking out the labor costs rather than a lump sum on each item. I know if you can do it, I'd appreciate it.
Well, we can. And I'll do that, and I just want feedback if there's anything that I'm not, if you want further clarification.
Okay. Thank you very much. The only other thing I have is a question on minutes. First of all, let me compliment Chrissy. She's a real asset to the organization, that young lady. I've never, ever had a no from her. I've asked her to do things for me. She's always done, she's done promptly. Her follow-up is incredible. And I don't know how she does these minutes. I'm telling you, they're 25, they're 30 pages, they're 35 pages. I looked at the minutes from 10 years ago when there were two pages. So I guess my question would be more directed towards David. Because these are such a difficult thing to do, in terms of putting in the minutes, and sometimes there can be errors in it. We're all human. And you might quote somebody as saying something when it may be with somebody else. My question to you is, what is, what is the guideline for official minutes? Is it the audio, or is it the type minutes?
The type minutes are the official minutes, because those are, minutes are not required to be verbatim of what was actually said. They're entitled, they can be generalized, you know, which is, you know, what Chrissy does. And once those have been adopted, you know, but we're, you know, the district keeps, keeps reference of its audio minutes as well, or the audio recordings. So, but the minutes that are printed and then adopted by the board are the official minutes.
Okay. With that said, I, you know, here again, it's, I know it's an incredibly difficult job, and maybe I should have brought this in closed session, but there were some, essentially some minutes that indicated that it was Supervisor Camp said it, and I didn't remember saying any of those things, and it was a whole page of Supervisor Camp. So clearly, I didn't state them, so I'm misquoted in those things. So how do I address that? Do I go prior to--
Is it old past minutes that have already been approved, or is it these minutes that are up for approval?
These existing minutes.
Well, then, yeah, we just need to make note of them, and we can get the changes, and then we'll--
I, you know what, because I wasn't sure of the whole policy, I don't know that I specifically brought them here. I didn't. Now, if somebody has, oh, wait a minute, maybe I do. Actually, let me see. There are minutes that-- I apologize. I wasn't sure of the process, so now I can't even give you the--
Lot of pressure, Mark.
Yeah, I know.
We always have the ability to change the minutes before they're adopted. If you see anything that you would like clarified or an error, please bring it to our attention, and we'll be glad to change that.
Or even if it's not to the, you know, like I say, they don't have to be verbatim, but if you want something specifically put verbatim in there that's not, just, you know, just let us know.
Well, I guess, more importantly, I want my name taken out of it, since I can make the statements.
Would the best scenario be for us, when we read them, to call right away and have them corrected then? Or is it at the meeting where we should do this?
No, if you, if you notice errors in the minutes, you should let us know.
Okay.
Immediately? Okay. Well, I guess I'm going to have to live with that. If somebody comes back to me and says you said this, I guess we'll have to say that's the way it is.
Yeah, we can hold the minutes. We don't, I mean, we can, we can table these and approve them at the next board meeting.
Okay.
You know, upon further review, you know, you can get your notes, or if anybody else has notes, just get them to Chrissy, and then we can, we can table these.
I appreciate it.
And then we get a, get a motion and a second and a vote to do so.
Okay. Thank you. That's all I have.
Chris, or Larry, Benny? I have one, one thing I'd like you to look at. It's on page 36 of May 12. It's when we give the four free memberships. When I read that, it doesn't say that we did to the employees. So I, I think that should be looked at and corrected, and so people know that, but we're gonna, are we gonna hold these?
If someone wants to make a motion to table approval of these minutes.
I'd like to make a motion to table the approval of the minutes. And I, that should include the 12th, because we didn't get the 12th until this week, too. Correct? No.
Yeah, we need a second.
I'll second that.
Public comment? Public comment? On the consent agenda. Okay, Chrissy?
Supervisor McCullough?
Yes.
Supervisor White?
Yes.
Supervisor Edgell? Supervisor Camp?
Yes.
President Gilpin?
Yes.
All right, so if anybody's got changes, just submit those changes to Chrissy. We'll get them at the June 23 meeting. We'll do these and this board meeting's minutes as well.
Thank you very much.
Next item is the action agenda. I need a motion to approve the action agenda.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Public comment? Okay, Chrissy?
Supervisor White?
Yes.
Supervisor Camp?
Yes.
Supervisor McCullough?
Yes.
President Gilpin?
Yes.
Okay, the first resolution is Resolution Number 2017-06-09-31. A resolution of the Sun and Lake of Sebring Improvement District to approve an interlocal agreement with the Board of County Commissioners, Highlands County, Florida, for the health insurance for district employees.
I'll make that motion. Second.
Any discussion?
Questions?
President Gilpin, we found out this week that an interlocal agreement will not be required in this case, so you received your resolutions, I believe, on Wednesday? I can't remember the day, I apologize. But, so no, no interlocal agreement will be necessary in this case. We're just, we revised the resolution to request, what we're doing today is requesting authorization to join the Highlands County Health Insurance Programs, and that's for major medical, dental, vision, and, under their insurance carriers. The district and the county both currently have health benefits under Florida Blue, which is Blue Cross Blue Shield. And the Highlands County Insurance Committee, they held a special meeting on May 18th where they unanimously agreed to accept the district to participate. We do anticipate that this will be about $100,000 in savings in one year, which will be next year, fiscal year, beginning October 1st, 2017. We have not seen the new rates yet, but we don't anticipate much of any increase at all. We are patiently waiting. I know that the Insurance Committee for the county will see those new rates. I think they have a special meeting on June 15th, which is next week. Attached, we've given you the spreadsheets, we've compared the plans, you've, you know, you've seen that the benefits are, are good, or just as good in some cases with what we have now. The only requirement that the Insurance Committee is asking of the district is if we provide some reserve funding in the amount of $1,000 per employee that will be held at the county in case that we have some major health catastrophe. And we don't anticipate that, but that, that is very typical. I mean, the Sheriff's Office has $400,000 in reserves that the county holds on behalf of their employees. So it's a much bigger organization. Some of the other organizations that participate is the Highlands County Clerk's Office, the Sebring Airport Authority. The committee also just approved Highland Soil and Water Conservation to come onto their plan as well, because it's a small group, and they, they're looking for, you know, better benefits. Do you have any questions? This is just to approve going on to the county. Now, we currently have an allocation where the district pays for 85 percent of the employee cost of their benefits along with their family. But we're going to bring another resolution back to you once we have all the final rates.
This is great. Yeah, it's very good.
Any comment?
Couple questions.
No, I went over it with her.
If the, the funding here that they are looking for, the $32,000 in this case is for 32 employees, if somebody else wants to join, you just add an additional $1,000. It's not like a signup period, is it, or?
Well, October 1st is open enrollment, so to enroll, or, or, that would be per employee.
Okay.
So if we had any, I think for next year, we do have 32 full-time employees, so that's where we came up with that number. If we only have 30 participate, then we'll only pay $30,000.
For $30,000.
Yes, sir.
Is there any plan to, because we have such a substantial savings, and I mean, this is real cool, I think this is great, to provide them better medical benefits? In other words, more subsidy from the district? So that the district is paying, what, 85 percent today? I believe, that's what it says. Do you intend to provide 90 percent?
We're, we're looking into it. The county pays 100 percent for the employee, and then the employee picks up the cost for children and spouses and things like that. But once we have those rates, we're going to bring back to you a proposal, probably, I don't think we're going to do it on June 23rd, but probably July 21st. We will have all that information put together for you.
Because that brings up--
That's right.
--an additional question.
Yes.
If, if we provide them additional 15 percent or 10 percent, or whatever is decided, that will erode the, the savings that we have, although it's a significant saving. So that approximate $100,000 that you're talking about will now get eroded by some--
We've already factored some of that percentage in to those savings costs, so we feel comfortable with this number.
Okay.
Yeah, we're, we're looking at, trying to bring back to you a proposal. We don't have it finalized, because we'd really like to see those rates first.
Okay. And so does that mean if we save $100,000, that's going to be taken out of your budget?
Not, not at all, no. Are we going to take it out of the budget? We, we, right now, we have budgeted in the general fund and the utility fund. For next year, we've budgeted what we anticipate our costs to be, but if we have $100,000 in savings, we're going to be removing that from our, our expenses at the next. I don't know if we're going to have it for you by June 23rd, but definitely by July 21st.
Okay.
So we have a savings within our fiscal budget. So we, we can utilize that for, you know, other, other purposes.
Public comment? Okay, Chrissy?
Supervisor Camp?
Yes.
Supervisor McCullough?
Yes.
Supervisor White?
Yes.
President Gilpin?
Next resolution is Resolution Number 2017-06-09-32. A resolution of the Sun and Lake of Sebring Improvement District to approve change order number one with Harstein Golf for an increase in the amount of $3,430 for changes to the scope of work on the Deer Run Golf Course Tea Reconstruction Project. Need a motion?
Motion approved.
Second.
Jim, do you want to comment on that at all?
This is just, we did some infield work of looking at one tee, number 16, Ron Darrell had addressed what he needed. We had to really come up with a solution, and that's the one we're going to come up with one, with our solution, which is, and the existing tee, which is quite a large tee, and it's quite a run from where we have to drop, drop the dirt, so that's, that's the reason that the expensive tee to build. And then there was a little bit of money left over, the total $35,000 that we had allocated, where we looked at agreeing with these, to see which of those tees was the most needed of repair, if you want to put it that way. The number one tee on Turtle is on kind of a sloping area, and it's also the first tee that will be displayed on that course. So we asked for a change order there upon that. We're actually going to do a green tee on number 13 of Turtle in-house. Since there are 36 green tees without, you know, in the golf course, if we had to do those in the future, that would be expensive. So we're trying to see how difficult this would be for us to, you know, do those in-house. Are there any questions on the change order?
The number one tee will be done in conjunction with what we're doing right now on deer.
Correct.
So it will hap, it will be happening while we have the course open?
Yeah.
Okay.
So we'll try to do it, that's a great question, and I'll give a couple in my report. So we do have, if you approve that change order, that's to do, and then also the number 11. Our plan on number 11 was to do that late today, you know, four or five o'clock, start to go on, and, and then do that late today. Yeah, hard to get that done in the day or two. And then we would do the same thing with number one. It is just a green tee, so it's just kind of a safety issue there, trying to, you know, make sure nobody gets hurt and having to--
Okay, thank you.
Any other comment, guys? Public comment? It wasn't great, was it? And I had a problem with what the word was done, I had a problem with what it was written. You say scope of work, and it's broad, and tough. You say Deer Run Golf Course, and you can find one tee that you're working on. Now, there's no need to cut the dollars, you know, for, for, so I thank you, Mr. and Mrs. Trump, because President Darrell is awful, too, as a lawyer, and so, thank you. Any other public, public comment? David, is that, is there any clarification needed on that?
I don't think we need to, because the RFP 1704 describes, you know, with this, I'm not certain exactly what was in that RFP, but the, the changes that we're making are to the actual RFP, the scope of work of the RFP, so.
Okay. The change order does mention Turtle Run.
Mm-hmm.
Hole number one, by adding the forward tee. It's in the, it's in the supporting documentation.
I'm not, I certainly understand the purpose of the course. I'm just saying, it's a big goal, and what people need to learn is that, I mean, it's like, these doctors, you gotta be, they're vital, they're no way to mention course. So I'm just saying, if you want to spend the money, you don't have to go to the, you know, say, or spend the, the, the course. But to me, it's not a lot of, 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 it's not, it's not-- Thank you, Rusty. Chrissy?
Supervisor Camp?
Yes.
Supervisor McCullough?
Yes.
Supervisor White?
Yes.
President Gilpin?
Next resolution is Resolution Number 2017-06-09-33. A resolution of the Sun and Lake of Sebring Improvement District to award contract for district signage to Don Bell Signs for $22,580.
Motion approved.
Second.
Anybody want to? Do we need any explanation?
We, we brought these signs back to you, I think, about six months ago. I want to thank district staff for all their time and efforts in, in putting together, first of all, the RFP. We did not have any bidders on this project. We reached out to multiple companies to try to receive quotes. We finally did receive one, and to move forward with this project, we're recommending Don Bell Signs at $22,000. We have budgeted for this project $25,600, so we have plenty of the budget in the general fund to cover those costs. But again, thank, thank you, staff, for all the time and effort in, in putting this together.
Any, any questions?
No.
My only thing, it's for the audience, is this was passed last year, right? And, and we got no bids on it, and that's why it's come back? I mean, relatively is the reason?
We didn't put it out for bid last year. What we did is we brought it to you as a recommendation. So what you did is you looked over each sign, and you just, you came to a consensus. I don't believe there was a resolution or anything. We just had it for discussion. So I, I did bring it to you--
Okay.
--at that time, but now we finally did the formal bid process, and six months later, we're--
Okay.
--we're ready.
Okay. Public comment?
Morning. Phil Northrup, President. I feel like you're only taking all kinds of notes here. On this sign, if you could please tell me, what is that sign for? Because I thought the wrong dedication sign was $150,000, $27,000, $1,500. I hope that it was proposed a $3,500 sign for one of the clubs on the district. That, I don't know. I thought that would reject.
Bill, do you want to look at them? They're all right here.
We did take out the sign that was proposed in front of the district office. So the district office is not getting a sign. The list includes, we have directional signs. We're going to have a new sign at the first circle on Sun and Lake Boulevard to match the sign that's in the second circle. So that's, that directional sign will be replaced in the very first circle of Sun and Lake Boulevard. That one will be replaced. We also have signs on the corner of Sunrise and Edgewater, it's going to be replaced. Signs on Ortega, that's going to be replaced.
Basically, a lot of them are the directional signs, I think, and--
Yes, we do have a new sign, a directional sign. It's going to be on the fence. It's going to be near the driving range, directing you to the driving range or to the Turtle Run course. That's a brand-new sign. Yes, we do have a new sign, a directional sign, it's going to be on the fence, it's going to be near the driving range, directing you to the driving range or to the Turtle Run course, that's a brand-new sign. We have them all listed, and there's a couple other directional signs for Turtle Run.
Okay, now we'll get into my favorite subject, we've communicated a lot of, a lot with different people, including, uh, district managers. On the other side, now, I'll try, Sun and Lake will, I think, go through the whole thing, but there's no specific sign directing people into Sun and Lake, letting them know that it's 36 holes available, certainly one whole sign that they put up by the bell, people, that's fine, you know, but there's three little things, the tall, breast brick, and all the above. All I have requested is to put up some further signs to attract people, to let them know, and so there's another, another permit sign, like, Fred wants to have the J L D sign, or something like that, but, to me, it's just, it's a $451 deal. Now, we have new signs on Sun and Lake Boulevard, always, I believe we have the $10,000, okay, now we're allocating, which is on the budget for $22,000. Now, to me, to put up three or four, two or three other signs, for $151, it's not that it's worth it, and I think we'd pay back, because it would attract people. At least, let them know there's 36 holes here. They had a survey out there, survey, a gas survey, that said there's 2,000 vehicles that wanted to down Sun and Lake, I would have to work on this. There must be 10,000 to 100,000 cars that have been walking down 47, and so it's a made-up bid, and self-flower. So what I'm just saying is that, just for a temporary deal, I know you don't want to have a Toyota sign up there, you don't want to have golf bags on the homes, and that sort of thing like that, but a welcome sign, 36 holes, can be just, allow the people to investigate. It's a simple request, gotta be done.
We're looking into it. We are looking into the costs, but that is something that we have not proposed in our marketing plan.
I appreciate that you've considered this action, but I really...
Any more public comment? Okay.
We're looking into it. Getting quotes, looking into the possibility, I mean, if it's something, it's within our budget, we could consider, but this is nothing that came from my board of supervisors nor myself to look into. We can find out what the costs are, and I could certainly propose it to the board and see if that's something they want to entertain. It's going to, I'm going to look in... I don't have an answer just yet, but I have my community services director looking into the costs and what we're looking at. I mean, these type of flags, you know, the less expensive they are, you know, they don't last very long, you know, if you get flags that do have, you know, a more thicker material, they will last longer with winds and rains and things like that, so we're looking into different things. Right, well, I look into what we, when our budget is adopted, based on our budget, you know, that's my responsibility. I mean, this is over and above what we have considered, so I don't know that we're even going to consider, just depending on what the costs are. So we're going to look into it. I just don't have a date yet. He will be told, yes. Yes, correct.
Any other public comment? Okay, Chris?
Supervisor McCullough?
Yes.
Supervisor White?
Yes.
Supervisor Camp?
Yes.
President Gilpin?
Yes.
Next resolution is Resolution Number 2017-06-09-34, a resolution of the Sun and Lake of Sebring Improvement District to award contract for the Mandela Street sand removal to Hick Creek excavation for $24,000.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Is that you, Mike?
Yeah. Mike?
Yes.
Are we going to save what little bit of good sand is left?
Uh, we've been using quite a bit, uh, that was dumped over, hopefully it was a sea private, a low private, uh, and we're almost out, probably about, I'll act like I was, and we're going to have to, and, uh, we started, anything that we can do, we do.
Somebody told me that Hornick was going to take that sand, I don't remember who told me that. So it's not decent filter?
Right.
So what we've removed thus far doesn't reduce the cost, I mean, this estimate of $24,000, I'm guessing was based on what was there originally, so if we've removed...
Anything else?
Not necessarily from Michael.
My only comment, Mike, and this isn't to you or Andy or anybody, but it just, this is a fine example of what the heck happened. I mean, that, I mean, how in the heck could we dump stuff on other people's property? And I just, and I'm not, I just bowled off because... Well, I'm sure I can rely on you and the rest of our people that something like this should never happen, and if it starts to, and you see something like that going on, would you please tell some of the supervisors? Because this is absolutely the most ridiculous thing. Okay, I just had to say...
That was my comment, too.
Okay, okay. Thank you. Anything else, guys? Public comment?
I guess I have to, I have the same question that Mike had. I don't know how this happened, it's done with, it's over with, it's going to cost us $24,000 to do this, but it was against other people's wishes. I was not aware that David had, you know, objected to that. I had been out to that area before, I just cannot understand how anybody in their right mind could dump that amount of topsoil or sludge, or whatever else it was, on somebody else's property and think they could get away with it. So the end result is X amount of years later, we're hit with a $24,000 bill, another one of those things that, I got you type of thing. I would hope it never, ever happens again. That's all I have to say.
Any more public comment? Okay.
Supervisor White?
Yes.
Supervisor Camp?
Yes.
Supervisor McCullough?
Yes.
President Gilpin?
Yes.
Next resolution is Number 2017-06-09-35, a resolution of the Sun and Lake of Sebring Improvement District to award contract for electrical engineering services.
Motion approved.
Second.
In our upcoming utility budget for next year, we have included plant, water plant wiring upgrades, and some Unit 23 SCADA upgrades. In order for us to move forward with these type of projects, we have advertised for proposals for electrical engineers. We received two proposals, one from Craig A. Smith and Associates, and the other from advisors, and staff is recommending Craig A. Smith and Associates as our electrical engineer today.
Any comment?
Of course. Okay, so, I have some basic questions to ask, and hopefully you can answer these. We do projects, we budget for projects, we say it's going to be budgeted for $250,000 or 40, we have $300,000 allocated for this wiring project, including the SCADA. I've done the tours, I understand, not technically what has to be done, but I've gone over and tried to understand a little bit about it. How come at that time, and I know at the last meeting you talked about looking into bringing an engineer in, how come at that time, when we were budgeting $300,000 to do this project, we didn't include consulting fees associated with that, did we not? Know we wouldn't have to have a consultant? Why is it that we do projects, but we, I understand from an accounting standpoint, you have to break it out this way and break it out that way, but the project is the project, this is what is going, the bottom line is it's going to cost me $300,000 plus. So I'm trying to understand how that doesn't get put in the budget for the project.
Well, we have about $40,000 allocated right now for engineering consulting fees in the utility fund. If we need to move some of those fees to the actual project itself, we can do so. We really just, until we sign a contract, we don't know what their fees are going to be, are we going to, are they going to charge hourly, are we going to try to do a monthly retainer? I mean, all those things we need to work out. So we are going to be proposing either to increase the engineering fees in the utility fund, we already have consultant fees in there, and maybe move some of that to the project, or just kind of see where we stand and how much the engineering fees cost. We just don't know yet.
Okay, so if I understand that correctly, what you're saying is you're going to revise the project to reflect the engineering fees, associated fees with that, so that when we look at the project, it will no longer be a $300,000 project, it'll be $300,000 plus?
It will, yes.
Okay, so my next question to that is, and I appreciate this, my next question to that is, the $250,000, and that will probably be coming up from the budget workshop in two weeks, is that an estimate of what it's going to cost, or did we get, did you have somebody come in from an organization, electrical firms and whatnot, to give us kind of a ballpark figure? Would we come up with that $250,000 if we didn't have an engineering consultant involved?
When Mr. Griffin prepared the water and wastewater systems review, that was an estimate that he had given. It was also an estimate that I had seen, this has been talked about for years, to do, so he believed that that was a good starting number that we can use, so that was based off his estimate.
Okay, so that's two and a half, three years ago, though?
No, that was recent, when he did the recent water...
Oh, the recent one?
The recent one, yes.
Great, thank you.
Yes.
We don't have an idea yet on what is going, you gave us an estimate of their fees, do we, are we going to get an estimate of what, since they're supposedly familiar with Sun and Lake and the project, will they be able to come back to us and say, we're thinking in the terms of $10,000, or we're thinking in the terms of $20,000? They will do that?
Exactly, yes.
Thank you.
Anything else? Public comment? Okay, Chrissy?
Supervisor Camp?
Yes.
Supervisor McCullough?
Yes.
Supervisor White?
Yes.
President Gilpin?
Yes.
Okay, next on the agenda is a discussion of the golf memberships, and this is something we asked Supervisor Camp to get with Mr. Kurtzborn, and so now we're going to discuss that.
Hopefully I can keep this down to 10 minutes, and we'll see from there. As Michael had indicated, in April, it was requested that I get together with Jim Kurtzborn, kind of sit down and get an idea of membership questions, policies, these are not my ideas, these are ideas that came from individuals, individual members, as well as outside people, actually. And I emphasize, these are not my ideas, some of these things have already been implemented, so they're going to be repetitive, but in any case, I have a disclaimer up there that it is not me, once again, I can't repeat this more than a dozen times, because I've got thrown under the bus by a few people already, so I did it officially. Okay? The bus was not real big. Okay, it's not working.
We have extra copies.
I did actually have extra copies, but...
Yeah, I can't read it.
Okay, why don't you give the extra copies out then to them?
Give them black type next time.
Yeah, okay, anyway, what's happening, she's going to advance it, is we're going to cover a couple different things. Jim and I sat down, Jim was in agreement with it, there's a lot of these things that are available today, the information is available. We're going to cover a policy manual, membership classifications, and membership questions. Currently, there's no policy manual in place today, in terms of a formal policy manual, you know, there's documents out there, as I had indicated, but they're not in any single place, so what happens is when a member comes in and has a question, a lot of times, it's difficult to find that information, and at the same token, when they go to management, management might not be able to give them an answer, they'll have to research it, and this is nothing against management, because there's so many things that happened over the years, but they might have to research it, and they come up with some ad hoc questions or answers, so they have to go through this repetitive motion of answering these types of things. There also doesn't appear to be any single decision-maker when coming to policy questions or membership questions. or membership questions. Yes, they might go to Jim and his organization, but in the past, in the past, the membership hasn't necessarily flowed as smoothly, and the answers haven't been as smooth as with Jim Kurtzborn's organization. So, there were questions about, "How come this person's getting this? How come that person's getting that?" and so on. So, the idea is to create a policy manual of some type. This is, you know, whether it's a hard copy membership in the membership directory, which I think might be a little too large to put it into the small membership directory, whether it's a web-based policy manual. We could create it electronically for downloading. Today, there's a great, great package on our Casper website, and it talks about golf memberships. And under golf memberships, it breaks down all of the different categories, but it also breaks down different policies and procedures. So, this information is out there. It's just a matter of pulling it together and, you know, getting it disseminated to the people. You know, types of questions that we come up with during this discussion, Jim and I, were, "What are people looking for? What are members looking for?" And a lot of their questions pertain to, "How do I upgrade my membership?" Once again, this is just kind of a policy thing, someplace to go to. Organizations, be it private courses, semi-private courses, or public courses, all have this information available. What about our medical leave of absence program? We all know there's a medical leave of absence. We also know that there's a lot of people that are getting older here, and sometimes the policy... And I'm not suggesting to change the policy. I'm just saying that sometimes you might have an ailment one year. Since we're getting older, we might have ailments the following year. But, right now, the policy, as I understand it, is you get a one-time shot at this. If you get sick the next year, you're not eligible for it. Once again, I'm not suggesting that we change it. I'm just suggesting that we look at it and put it someplace where somebody can read about it. We talk about discounts in pro shopping and in the restaurant. That's a kind of a nice thing. You might say, "Well, people know about this." Well, a lot of them don't. They are not aware of it. They should be aware of it. They don't. What about a passing of a member? Well, and then Jim can jump in at any time. If you have a member that passes, and it's a family membership, let's say, or not even a family membership, let's say they have an estate, if you pass within the first 90 days of your membership, I believe, then you can get a credit. But, if 91 days later, you get... Something happens, you get no credit. Maybe that's something we should be examining. Then, we have different kinds of memberships. We have single memberships. We have family memberships. There's descriptions on some of those, but what constitutes a family membership? Does that mean husband and wife, boyfriend, girlfriend, somebody that lives... We have situations where there's people that live on the West Coast and on the East Coast. They're down here for six months. They join up together, and they share an apartment together, and all of a sudden, they're under a family membership. But, they're down here six months, and they don't see each other for six months, but that's the thing. We have sisters that have been out there that have, quite frankly, family memberships. So, we need to kind of define that. And I spoke to David for about 30 seconds at the last meeting because I know there's probably legal requirements here. So, you know, that's something that has to be looked at. We have memberships that are seniors for 80 years old, for an example. I'm sure we'll be covering this in the future meeting with the budget workshop, but does that mean only one person has to be 80? I mean, I don't know how to define that. There are some people that have very young spouses that might be 15, 20 years younger. There are some. So, does that mean that the person that's 80 gets the discount based on their 60-year-old wife? I don't know. We have three- and five-month memberships. That's kind of eroded our whole membership program, but it's a necessary evil. We need to have that policy in one single place. We have a great referral program. We have membership fee... Membership referrals for first-time buyers. Once again, not a single place to do it. We have dress codes that need to be addressed. We have initiation fee that's been there for seven or at least seven years that, let's get it off the books. I mean, unless we plan and institute an initiation fee, let's get rid of it. If there is an exception to one of these policies that they put in the policy manual, who is the person that makes that exception? And we all know there will be exceptions to policies. There always is. Does that mean that Jim Kurtzborn makes that exception? Does it mean that Andy makes the exception? Who makes that exception? Does it have to come back to the board? I mean, these are just ideas I'm throwing out to you. Little bit about personal carts and golf carts. These... Once again, this information is available. All we need to do is assemble it in one single spot. Now, I'm going to get to some parts that are really going to be a little touchy. Grandfathered members. We have grandfathered members here, people who pay half rates. Their grandfather that was grandfathered under a previous board, the pricing was changed on that back, I guess, seven or eight years ago. They increased it actually... It used to be they only paid 25%, I believe, and at least the board came to their senses and said, "We'll charge them 50%." Once that grandfathered, those individuals who are grandfathered are... Leave or no longer work for the organization, they will no longer be grandfathered. There's questions about, and here again, I'm not advocating one way or another, there's questions about employees at Casper and the benefits they get for golf, golf memberships. I have my own thoughts on that. What I think is a little bit of an issue, and has come up from some members, is there are individuals who are no longer members of this club because they chose to or worked, however it happened, there was a need, they ended up being employees of the club, and now it's eroded our membership once again. And since we're so concerned about membership and membership declining, I don't understand why we would be doing those types of things. Coming to an end here, almost, corporate membership. I'm amazed that nobody on the board in the past has ever heard of a corporate membership. I'm amazed that our golf management company, be it Kitson or Casper, has allowed this. At a time, it was probably good. The justification was that this corporate membership people, and I agree with it, they brought in members to this club, they promoted this club. We now have a referral fee. If you refer a member to this club, you get a percentage of your membership off. When you have eight to 10 people on a single corporate membership for $3,000, tell me what that does to erode the membership fees here. That has got to be addressed. Now, I don't understand... Once again, I can't emphasize it enough. If we're so concerned about membership revenue, how we allow roughly $20,000, $30,000 in revenue to disappear to $3,000, okay? We can cover a little bit about things that they should be in the policy manuals, such as hours of operation, the code of conduct, who gets suspended, how do you get suspended? Once again, all of that information is readily available. We just need to put it in a single spot. We don't address the MGA or the WGA or the chicks with sticks. They're all separate entities. No single place to find it. And finally, you know, we have golf committee, and unfortunately, a lot of people don't know what the golf committee does, and they do a tremendous amount of work. Some people agree with it. Some people don't. But, it certainly gets those day-to-day questions off of the board's back, I think. They're only doing some recommendations. It always comes back to the board. They don't make fiduciary responsibility or decisions. The driving range is another question that members have come up with, and they say, "Why are we not making more revenue at the driving range? Why are people coming over there with a fistful of tokens and getting golf balls?" I have no idea how that happens, but that needs to be addressed. Maybe we should be looking at a different type of policy or procedure where, instead of giving tokens out, like in a lot of courses, they give you a receipt. When you go in and pay for your fee, you get a receipt with a number on it, and you go over, and you can plug it in. I believe that that keypad over on the system in the driving range can certainly accommodate that. People driving off with golf balls, people driving off with, you know, baskets, and where does that come from? It comes from all of us. We're paying for that. That's revenue that we're losing, number one, because people aren't paying for these golf balls. And number two, the district or the golf operations has to replenish and rebuy golf balls. So, we need to have some kind of policing over there to take a look at it. And once again, I think that should be the biggest moneymaker we have in the operations here. We'll be talking, hopefully, about next budget series, budget meeting. Some people have come to me, and they've even quoted, they said to me, "Three years, two months, and six days, I'm turning 80." But, I would not be opposed to you looking at adjusting those discounted 80 rates to a more appropriate rate. They think that... There's a lot of people here, we're all getting older, including myself, and I would love to get that 80 rate when the time comes, but you know what? Maybe we have to look at that. Non-published and non-approved rates, we had a little bit of a discussion about that at the last meeting. If we're publishing a rate, then we need to come up with some kind of guideline that says that rate is what we're going to do. Not a cap on the rate, but a area on the rate. Then, we have the Tanglewood situation. Tanglewood gives us guaranteed revenue every single week. It's a great steady stream for revenue. They average, and I've gone through the last several years, $26 around. And $26 around, I'm not sure, and I can't confirm this, but I understand they might get other amenities like coffee and donuts the days they come, but I might be wrong. Maybe Jim can address that. But, why can't... I know we're trying to fill white space, and that's the intention, fill those tee times in that white space, but why can't we look at, instead of giving this away for $26, and we don't even have a guaranteed number of people that come in? Sometimes it's 60, sometimes it's 40, you know, it varies. Why can't we just do a special that day, then? Instead, in the high season, if we're offering, if it's a $52 or $53 rate, we'll do a special that day to fill that white space, and we'll do it at 37. I bet we'll fill up those spots, but we haven't tried that yet. So, maybe there's some other ways of looking at this. Tanglewood is part of this community of Sun and Lakes. However, Tanglewood doesn't pay but a minimal amount for their acreage, the way it's set up. Yet, they get the benefits of recreation. They get the benefit... Anything that we are entitled to as a Sun and Lake local resident who pays $600 or $700 in assessments, they get. And then, on top of it, they get a discounted rate for their golf. Something's drastically wrong with this, and I think it needs to be looked at. And in conclusion, I've listed for the individuals here, you know, you can choose to move forward with this. You can choose to reject it, you know, up to whatever you guys want. I put a checklist of items to the end on all of the different subjects that I kind of hit upon. The downside of this, and I'll ask, actually, I'll ask David, the downside of doing a discussion like this is, this is the first time these individuals have seen this document. However, I guess, and you correct me if I'm wrong, after thinking about it the other day, I could have included this in the package without a violation of sunshine law, could I have not?
Correct.
Okay. That was my shortcoming. So, what they're doing is they're seeing it for the very first time right now, and we're asking to have a discussion on it. And I am, you know, quite frankly, unless they have some strong thoughts on any of this, you know, it's very difficult to have a discussion. I would ask them all, if they're interested in this, say, "Yes." If they're not interested in this and they want to let it die on the vine, fine. I will never bring it up again.
Thanks, Mark. The idea that I would put forward is, I think it's an excellent idea to have everything in one place. We've looked at a number of clubs, other formats, and there isn't one consistent format. But, we will get our format put together. I think consistency is very important when you're running a club. We do believe we have the ability, I think we're certainly desperate, we're certain to create a member portal. We're on our website. We can have a division just that the members access would include their directory and some things that we might not want to have open to the public. We are in the process of getting play data captured for each membership division so that we can look at how many people every membership that we offer and how much they play, so that we can have for the next... The next budget, we have some of that data, but if that data isn't perfect. The only thing that I would say is that I think one of the difficulties that you can run into is that consumer isn't an home. So, our 300 members are not objective about how the club should be run, and there's 300 to 3,500 people that live in the district. So, you have to be careful of what they're looking for. We're all human, so what they're looking for probably is what works for them and not what's best for the club. It's pretty well-known, probably pretty hard to argue that private clubs and clubs that are run by entities that both specialize in golf are less efficient. And so, that's in a way, when our members and our consumers are telling us how the club should be run, first, they're not objective, and then, second, they don't have any expertise in business or advice on it. That's just, I mean, a very big thing. The business brand and the club are for, I don't think the operations, and I don't think the performance is very good. That's just the slippery slope. Thank you.
Like, yeah. I'm not suggesting that, in any stretch of the imagination, I'm not suggesting that the members run the club because I totally agree, they do not understand all of the background and the business aspects of it. They understand their personal interests and what's kind of best for them. I don't think, you know, a lot of the stuff that was covered based on policy is anything more than an explanation of what a member is expected to do or, in the event, should they get credit for something. So, the policy part of it, I don't see as a problem. It should be able to be put into a single spot, and it should be able to be disseminated to the membership. The questions of how to look at, let's say, the Tanglewood rate, since that's probably a very sensitive area, I'm not suggesting that we get away from anything like that. What I am suggesting is, rather than, let's look at it maybe a different way. We're trying to fill space, and we're charging $26. If we can fill that same space by an advertised special for $36, that means we're going to fill those 60 slots with a higher paying outside play. We're limiting ourselves to that lower rate, is all I'm saying. I'm not... You know, it has to be looked at. And I think that when we look at memberships, you know, in the budgeting meeting, the discussion was, "Let's go 3% across the board, maybe, or X amount of percent." You know, we have to look at the total membership on that. And there are a lot of dynamics that are in play here. So, I'm not, by any stretch of the imagination, suggesting how to run the organization because you are the professionals and we hired you to do this. I'm just saying, let's kind of look outside the box of different ideas. Well, thank you.
Have you guys got any more comments?
The only comment I got is, I think it's a good program here, and we should go forward with... I mean, his list of things to look at are pretty entailed and also very involving in a lot of the different issues. And a lot of the stuff needs to be explained. I mean, I think at the last budget meeting, I saw we had a corporate membership, and I never heard of such a thing. I know when David Ford was here and we were discussing, and Ron Wonderling, and we were discussing seasonal memberships and things like that, I brought up the fact, "Do we have a corporate membership?" And I was told we didn't, and I said, "Well, maybe we should look into one." But, if this is right, eight to 10 people for three... for three thousand bucks, that isn't what I had in mind.
It's correct.
We don't need it.
That is not what I had in mind. I was thinking more in terms of, like Florida Hospital and things like that, to get their executives here and get their employees here to, so I guess what I'm really trying to say is, I like the list of things that we need, topics we need to talk about. And some need adjustments, and some don't. And having a central location for all of this information is definitely an important step going forward, I think.
Larry?
Well, I'm like Kurt. I didn't realize that the corporate membership involved that kind of people. In fact, I didn't even know there was, that we for sure had one. Getting everything in one, in some type of electronic form, I think is an awful good idea. I think we need to take a few of these things and bring them back at the next meeting as far as, maybe some ideas on this Tanglewood, some ideas on some, like the rates, and each one of us bring back something at the next meeting with an idea, so we can, so we can get a direction to go. For as far as rates and, and membership tax with fees.
Okay.
I'll take a step further, too. Just let me, because you'll last. A step further. I will, I will take a step forward and say today, because like I said, there is a tremendous amount of great information out there. And I will go through this list that I have, because there are, this is already covered, it's just not one spot. I will identify those areas that are already, there's a document of some form or fashion, you might need to be elaborator on. That way, we can eliminate a lot of the questions on this list. We probably can, we can probably cut this down to about eight subjects. Because, like I said, this information is available, it's a question of putting it in one single spot, and an easy access. So I will take that step for the next meeting. Okay?
Okay, yeah. And you make that, those steps, but the rest of you, we'll pinpoint our own if we want to bring anything up on that. But I just want to comment that I think it's very important that the supervisors are involved in this. And we, we asked Billy Casper to run it, and I'm sure they will. But, but I got to tell you, I'm a little disappointed in what I think, what I think Billy Casper is supposed to do. And when I see a membership, corporate membership, that was, and I knew about it, because I did some digging here. So I knew there was a corporate membership. It took a while to find out how much it was, how much, and it was raised from two thousand to three thousand. It took a while to figure out who was all on it, because it was like, it's none of our business. And it is our business. I mean, I, I believe that we should set the policy on all these things, and Billy Casper did. And I'm disappointed that we've had a membership, and not, this is even before Jim, for three thousand dollars for eight or ten people. And nobody come to me and said, Mike, I think we got a problem here, because I'm, I'm running your company, and we're really getting gypped. And those are the kind of things that I expect from Sun and Lake Corporate. That's the stuff I expect from Billy Casper. When stuff is costing us money, it's our business. And I just would, the stuff that I found out in the last year and a half on memberships, which Jim so nicely and with the help of others have corrected, why these things weren't corrected by Kitson, why these things weren't corrected by Billy Casper, why they didn't come to us, and again, it's my opinion, these things we should know about. When stuff, when we are being cheated, and we are not getting our full money, we should know about it. And I want recommendations from Billy Casper, and I want recommendations from Sun and Lake Corporate. But that's what I want. I want recommendations, and then, and then we can decide what we're going to do. And that's what I hope this, this is going to, Jim and Mark. Because we've had, there's been a lot of things that's been wrong with our memberships and stuff, and unfair. It's good for you, and it's not good for you, and people don't know it. And I think that's, hopefully, what's, Mark, and I appreciate your, your effort. It's a great, we, we need to get into this, and get this straightened out, and so Jim can run it the way that supervisors want it. But I don't think it takes thirty years' experience to know that we have a corporate membership for eight or ten people for three thousand dollars, and there's something wrong with that. So I'm very much in favor of this. I want, I'd like this to get straightened out. And I think all the supervisors will. And I'm just so happy with you, Mark, to work with Jim and get this started. So that's all I have. Is there any public comment?
Good morning. I really appreciate the idea of this policy manual, of course, by the beginning here. It should be written down, scattered among all the paperwork, and introductory to Sun and Lake, and definitely that sort of thing like that. And it's just, speaking for a former head of golf, being honored to advise the committee with Larry White and Father Steve, membership for one or three months here, my question is, who's going to be involved with this question and checklist? There's some viable questions here, private dress code, tee time, things like that. How can we, how can we work with Jim to make sure that everybody is satisfied? Put aside, we have tried it in a situation where we have low participation in golf. And we're relegated to tee off, for example, on the tent hall. Now, as I said, it's not fifteen, sixteen, or seventeen. That's where I thought the first hole was, sixteen holes. And low participation, and teach sheet says there's nobody on the first hole, second hole, there. Is there any reason why an individual in, they do go out there, they question, do the girls have a lot of problems golf with the tee time thing? They don't like seeing off a chance, and they don't, they want to tee off someplace else. But I mean, you know, I asked the question, and it's like, gee, well, we have a turnover, a roll over, and so forth. You can't, you can't see off of the first hole, even though it's open. I understand it's open for, we won't watch it. I understand. But if nobody there, why can't it be flexible? It's on a daily basis, and that sort of thing like that. Where the group leader has then said, what hole do you want? Is it going on a chance? Is there anybody on one? No. Can we be flexible enough to do things like that? And that's called cooperation. And that's looking at the methods and saying, well, we can do something for you today. Isn't that just a simple example of policy? And this, this is a good list of items. But who is going to decide? Are you going to have a golf committee? Are you going to have individuals to disseminate a suggestion? How is this going to work?
I would assume that Mark and Jim will bring back to the supervisors. And the supervisors will make those decisions. I'm assuming that.
Are you going to have a general question for the judges to suggest items, or then you guys to make the decision? How is that going to be done? Is it going to be made by it?
Bill, do you have a suggestion that, I'm sure there's a lot of suggestions that can be put on this. Do you have a particular thing you'd like to see marked on this, so that we can put it down now for a future discussion?
Well, just looking at that, I circle, what is that all about? Do you have no idea?
We don't know whether it's even a viable thing. The question came up from a, from a member, and it was addressed to me. That's why I said, I'm not making any of these decisions. This is a board type of thing. Do we have complement? I don't know the answer to that. I don't believe there is. Maybe there is. I don't know.
Well, one thing that-
Bill, you're-
Mr. Dan and I have been working on this, and one of the things that we make this work at, was we haven't really discussed the project, and it's been going wrong. So, you know, that's been part of it. Eighty percent of what's on this is all based around policy. And I've been working with Mark and Chris, so. The rest of all are the things that aren't just normal decisions that you see in other clubs. So if you went to four or five websites that these other clubs are looking at in their policies, all that stuff, we can get out of the weeds, and you don't worry, golfing or anything else. When we start talking about pricing and other things such as that, those are the things that go to the supervisors. They don't, they don't belong anywhere other clubs. When you're talking about finding a certain player, it's hard to understand how it works. Hopefully, that's clarified a little bit.
Okay, Bill, your, your time's well over, but if you have one more point, would you make that, please?
There are several things here, like you said, the idea of the dress code, hanging catch legs, a lot of hanging catch legs are very expensive. Maybe make a look at what I want to find out, is to make sure that the general public is kind of in agreement with the policy manual, which I think is a great idea, that we have a block, that we all understand that. But, for example, firstly, the cash organization was here. We, we were told that we could go to a cash club group, golf club, and it would be cots holding. Now, my idea is different. Now, maybe that's worth something to complement, we thought, where somebody from another cash club group comes in, and wants to just pay for the golf. So a lot of things could be explained and understood. I just want to make sure that everybody understands that.
Thank you, Bill.
You're welcome.
Any more? Frank?
I know a gentleman, he's Walt, Walt Madison, my colleague with us, with Dan. And I'll take a comment, why do you guys, you get family, they talk? You know what he said? He said, you have the best product, you cannot get, you get well. It happens to a couple. You raise your feet, you go there. Things are different. The other thing is, Tanglewood. You know, those people that play, they're kind of, twenty-six dollars. A brother comes over here, he has a place here, there's a couple weeks here, they're just not on the ball, they're restricted. It's twenty-three dollars. They stop all these stupid things. You can follow up the golf club, and make more money than you would do, for the price of a regional level. When Highland Ridge has the best product, I never said that golf was the last thing about. Everything is different. We need to stop the way about seventy thousand people playing the golf, which is a tragedy for us. But, thank you, that's a product, that's a coordinate, to try to make a regional income. If I try to beat the members, I must be, I'm going to go to the top. The other thing is, if you have one member, and you can get a number of people that come down from Canada, they can't get it until November or March. I know the hundred dollars fee, they charge, I don't know why, because they came in November. If you're not playing, what is the fee? When you come here and spend a whole month, why do you keep it up? You have to be like that? Something about the driving rate? Yeah, I don't think I should comment on that. Well, a number of other people just went for the same thing. And I made some noise about that, and would wait. So.
We offered a regular, sort of, you know, people were told, like, if you wanted the money put on their account, they would pay it. If you can't eat, I don't understand. Everything is specific, but, well, you got hangers, the hammers, so five months later, we had two people telling us at a district meeting, that if we didn't, we'd do something differently than we do. So one, one person wanted to start his membership in the fifteen club, and you're only doing it at the first at that time. And then another person was interested in something else. At that meeting, the board approved, we do the golf, those people requested, and neither one of them took out membership. So what people always tell you they're going to do something, means they're going to do that. They were going to say to me that the board was, they were going to, they asked for something, so that they renamed exactly what they asked for, and then they chose not to make it. So I'm not, if Mr. Whitelove had went to Highland Ridge, and to a similar course, and paid a similar amount, I would be more concerned than when he went somewhere else, that was forty percent less than we are. So maybe that was the reason he left. I can't tell you, and nobody can tell you, even he can't tell you.
But he wasn't the only one. There are a number of committees that come out here in November. And it doesn't really matter. We're not trying to cut their costs, or, the thing is, all we want is really comfortable, that's what I'm-
Thank you, Frank.
Why wouldn't it? Why isn't it? You know, the thing about the women, I want to break you. My wife, she's called, she's on a national, she's been here for a while, she's started her work, you know. Now, I think there's a lot of reasons, and they're being twenty-six. And we live here in a community, there's not a, I talk to people, a lot of the clubs that I want to leave, they're like, they're struggling, and they have golf clubs. And they want to go to the club, or golf. And a lot of guys want to go to the club, and I say, well, they just want to come there. They're great golfers. Oh, it's a curse for you, you know, that's what I'm saying. That's why, we're charging way too much money for golf. And we care a lot more people coming here to golf, gentlemen with white spots in the summer, in the summer. And we're more concerned with charging too much money. Something we gotta turn that around. Our rates are too high in the summer. Tanglewood, they overdid it. But I have a good feeling about pickleball, was putting all these pickleball courts, where Tanglewood had tennis and everything else, there was, two, four months later, and they put a next to pickleball courts over in Tanglewood, and they only did some overdid of golf in these. Then I know, they still come, they're not as often to the court. But they made us spend a lot of money to play pickleball, by putting in pickleball courts. So we go out of our way to kind of aid them, but they don't want to pay our fees.
Thank you, Rick. Great. Great.
I, obviously, I was just feeling my friend, my wife, and she's lying out about, she's really saying, you know, that it's not a gender, it's not a gender. I think I want to represent how I'm finding it, and, uh, one of the conditions for grand law, it's about the club, you know, generally if you, uh, they're hard to, like, they're all, why they push it, and, 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 and,
I think I can answer it with the help from Jim. There was a while back that they were employees, and as an employee, they were allowed to get a membership at a discounted rate. That was the program, I believe, at the time, at least from the research that I've seen or done, as well as what Jim has said. Those individuals, I mean, that list is down to four, quite frankly, the program has essentially gone away, uh, and as I had indicated earlier, when and if the time comes that they no longer want to have a membership here, that benefit will go away. You know, as far as the actual history how they originally started, I'm not sure, maybe Jim can answer that. Is that sufficient?
Yes, I don't have the detailed data, but basically, we have two current employees that were marked that as correct, um, that were, when they went from allowing their employees to have a fifty percent discount, when they, when they did away with that program, they extended that program, uh, to Neil Hodge and, and Mr. Schaver, uh, Del Smith, and this was from the district supervisor. So, it's done at a district meeting, and it's in there, and it's, uh, they extended a complimentary membership to Del Smith. And then last year, basically, uh, when we were in the membership process, and it came out, for lack of a better term, that we had two sisters that were given a family membership. They were grandfathers for la- for last year, so we'll have to look at it again this year if that's something that goes forward. But those are the, those are the four people that are, that are grandfathers. So, three of them were, well, actually, all of them were done by the district supervisors, you know, at the meetings.
So, I would just say, if you revisit it, as you are with the corporate leadership, that's all I can do.
Any more?
Well, the principal president, I'd like to ask you to come see your daughter, and ask her to be there. How about that? Then, before, uh, looking at you, is there any word that you think is very, uh, is that you're, uh, individual, and you're only here?
That would be a question I think Jim would have to answer.
I'll just try to keep that.
Don't keep that moving.
Just in one minute, explain a little bit of, you know, that David, that Mr. Jim's program, and you're getting your average rate for a year, you know, for a year. You know, right now, approximately, our rate to play golf is twenty dollars, and in season, high season, full, forty dollars, so, you have to think about what kind of years you're playing to understand how that rate is. The Panglewood situation, and it's not just Panglewood, the situation you have here with the man, our demand is very high in January, February, March. The rest of the year is just not high. And so, like, specifically, this last year, there was a group at Highland Ridge that plays on Wednesday, about twenty-four guys, about sixteen guys on Thursday, got a new order on Highland Ridge, you know, he wanted to raise their fee, three dollars, um, you know, they told us they would pay two dollars more, he didn't get back to them, they came here, we now have a group of twenty-four that plays every Wednesday, and a group of sixteen that plays every Thursday, that comes in each. So, over two dollars each people left, that they were not happy with the facility or anything, it was just, they didn't get their rate there, and they got their rate here. He sat down with Panglewood this year to try to raise, Panglewood were paid, and after they talked to him, he was like, I haven't seen, I can't. Make it simple, the deal here is you've got thirteen golf courses in a very lowly populated area, and if, if we lower our rate, all that's going to happen is that everybody else is going to lower their rate more, you know, during the summer to get more play, so, um, it's a dynamic pricing model, it's standard in the industry. On the twenty-third, I'm going to bring in David, he does the website, he's, he's in charge of cash per, their marketing for the whole country, of how they work to maximize making money for people, you know, guaranteed to focus, so, maybe that'll-
That would help. Okay, myself, how much would I have to pay if I don't throw these things off the bank, and somebody's like, send me to the bank, Panglewood, how much do you pay if you have to pay? That's the question, I'd be surprised, okay? Because, what I'm getting at is, is Panglewood really, uh, is, uh, I'd like to maybe the same benefits for me, for a pro club, maybe by assessment, you know, the community, it's highly regarded. Panglewood doesn't own any property, so, they don't pay any, they're in the company, it's correct. The owner of the land, that owns the land now, they use to discuss it. So, that's very important to you, they don't own the land, so, if that is the case, if I'm wrong, but if that's the case, then I would say that they should have the same benefit that I, uh, I think I said, or who's paying, uh, own the land, that the house gets, and so forth. So, I think this thing should be reconsidered. Now, if Panglewood come in there, that's going to include this, you know, if they come in here with forty members, well, they should give a group discount that doesn't actually involve. But, getting back to my point, if they don't own the land, they don't pay the services like I do, why should they be entitled to do the different plays that's better for the right range? That might deserve, they might deserve a lot of time. Martha Penny, let's see, she's a little bit, so, she's sixty-one hundred, so, a lot of times, they're willing to walk the line, and refuse to read it justice, you know, with the second. My other concern is, uh, I think we're going to have a real support rate, I think, when you have to decide, do qualify the agents who own the land, maybe that corporate rate is a little bit too low, maybe should raise the corporate rate.
Or eliminated.
I know, okay, you remember. But, uh, my other concern is, is we play on the weekend, Saturday, Sunday, you've got your honeymoon, I know it's South Florida, but, like, it's all Saturday and Sunday, I'm talking South Florida, I'm talking David, uh, rather than calling it the county, you have Tuesday, Monday, that's where a lot of people, you know, the weekend morning, you don't have them to play golf, and those early going spots should be made available, and I worry the members, the members that have membership here, they should be able to play Monday through Friday, but you decide you're happy, you're already getting open, so that you can, you know, higher, uh, a higher rate. Less the membership, and you can, the membership, you can have the spot, and I think that's something that should be considered. The problem I had, uh, offered, you know, a year ago, was our Friday rate should be right up back here, so that you could, uh, see that offer, sometimes the, our bar, serve drinks and so forth, and open up a nighttime driving rate, and bring them to the lake. And most of the, most of the, you may laugh, but most of the, a lot of, uh, which is golf courses down and about, they have to be blockless, or they're missing driving, I think.
I agree.
If you're driving, uh, a lot of people don't have time to go golf, because, you know, watch the school, and you have to, you know, just go golf, just watch, they drink a lot of beer. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Currie.
I'm going to add a little, once, once again, my disclaimer, that, Rusty, these, I was only the information gatherer, not the decision maker for the questions that came up. These are people that came to me and asked the question, I just put them on a list, so it is not supervisor or Mark Camp's specific ideas.
You can blame me.
So, once again, I'm putting this disclaimer out there. I would definitely be checking my notes.
I said, well, I feel like it's Panglewood, when you get, you know, all the same, the record that's out, and the, uh, Highland, uh, the, uh, so, 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 so,
Any more public comment? Okay. Add-on items?
None.
Petitions and communications?
None.
Staff reports?
Mr. Kurtzborn wants to give a staff report.
Uh, just to update, um, the golf course, uh, specifically, our next budget meeting on the twenty-third, Mike Stevens will be here, he's our regional director, and he's, he's working heavily with Ramon on the irrigation project, uh, they met with, uh, Ringberg representative last Tuesday at a seminar, um, and they're, they're really drilled down on all the ingredients. As I have said before, David Van Delista, um, he's our director of marketing, he's staff girl, he's here also, he's about marketing and, uh, Turtle Run reopened today, um, Turtle Run was very beneficial with, uh, uh, doing our normal maintenance practices at this time of year, all the year, the station that we do, um, you'll definitely see when you get out there that we focus a lot on the facility and, and floods, and we've got the great growing on the golf course, and, um, the greens are a little bit, uh, they're full, but they're a little bit shaggier than we'd like, just because of the weather, it hasn't let us talk, so, we do a couple things, you know, and, 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 uh, we're going to hear, but, uh, next Friday, we're scheduled, uh, Kurt and Jenny and I are scheduled to speak to, uh, Cliff Scholl, um, to continue our, our project of looking at the clubhouse renovation. Um, I have contacted, uh, community dealers of equipment in Tampa and in Orlando, um, and also, as, uh, known for the banquet support, you can visit their website and look at their different, uh, questions. Uh, I did also talk to, um, Omar about the fact that you may be aware of the fact that you, you did bypass the RFP process, that we're going to try to get products from either banquet support or new dealers. Um, Henry Delozer, when the, I've reached out to him, and he did him, uh, on a follow-up call, uh, to understand better what he could offer to the district, um, what services he can offer, what usually be associated with that. Um, we've had a, a meeting, um, we had sporadic meetings over the last year, I would say, probably about five months, where the general manager of the district and the president of supervising the golf, here and myself, me, uh, we did a meeting with, uh, Bob, and President Gilford and Jenny on the community side. Uh, the number, the two major topics that we covered were communication, improving the communication, and it's a lot specifically the supervisors and the golf committee, um, and the working lines, you know, counseling, which I think is happening with every club, I think on the silver authority of the golf committee. Year run, uh, will close on Monday and start the T project, uh, along with the Eurocations. We have a number of initiatives that we hope to get to, it's summer's very busy, you get in and out to buy the reins, and you have a lot of cultural practices, but, um, our, one of our major things this year, we want to try to work on, we don't know if it's going to be three holes or six holes in each course, but we try, um, last year, we built some really big holes, a ton of holes, like number three and fourteen. This year, we want to get maybe four or six holes in each course done, where we, um, built, um, what our fairway's in, uh, about, you know, twenty yards, we know a lot of what I would call block four in fact, uh, a bunch of little holes, so, um, that's kind of deep this, but we need to start somewhere and, and work our way through that. Um, also, um, here we know about five or six holes where, um, with the way our greens are elevated so much farther, the green is very bad, you know, shot, and I think, so we want, you know, to get to where we can address those. Uh, the golf committee, there's, there are action items, we just had a meeting on Tuesday, um, but we want to rededicate ourselves to act items, to attend the agenda, uh, to show what action needs to be taken, a lot of things get discussed, they can be confusing when you're eight months down the road, that something that you thought was discussed was decided on to be done, and was just really discussed, so, um, we're assigning action items, who's responsible for it, what the date is, um, that it should be completed, um, again, as I said, with that needing communication, it's definitely a danger, and always should be for the golf committee, and then remember, number one topic for the golf committee, um, this year is to tie them into a membership marketing program, where we really educate our members on what our brand is, and empower our members to reach out to their friends, um, to get, to get people to come and experience what we have to grade. Turtle, Turtle's done great with the T project, I just, I'm going to change, in the future, when I ask for it to rain, I'm going to specify that, um, it came a couple weeks earlier than we would have liked, but, Mike Hurley, thank you, Mike's done a great job to move all the dirt, for us, and the dirt's in place for the T project, which is a, a huge plus with the rain coming, uh, they'll officially send out the results of our survey, um, but it's been widely, widely positive from the numbers on the golf course, um, on a scale of, of one to five, with three being average, and four being above average, and, and five being excellent, uh, well over three quarters of our members are rating the courses as from above average to excellent, so, and that's great, thank you for giving us the support and funding to do that. Um, Mike's still duty on number five here, working the last, uh, fixing that pond, um, shoring up where we fill the sod, um, and after the closure, he's going to come in and put some sod around it, um, and eventually, we want to look into water plants, um, because that really is, I guess, just a strong rated pond, so it does go up and down, so in the summer, it's just been my experience that when you have air dirt, if there's, you know, some green growth there, it's kind of like stuff that makes it look, makes it look a little bit better. Um, we're researching our schoolwork project, uh, getting quotes from sign companies, and we got a local company, and also one in California that we're working with, um, but they've been in contact with cash per, uh, about Facebook advertising, getting more of them on the website, um, getting our phone directory on, on the website, uh, along with, hopefully it'd be great to have a picture of a member in a court eye or where they're from, and some things that helps our current members to connect with them. And that's my report, any questions?
Jim, my only question is that, I saw that there was dirt dumped by number eleven, is that to fill in that real low area, or is that for the tees?
That's for the tees.
Okay.
So, that, that will, that dirt on eleven actually will be used for the drop areas, for eighteen, and the, uh, for tee on eleven.
Because that, that is a real problem there when it rains a lot, but I, so I did dump, but that's good.
No, and we'll, we'll, and there are, there are a number of areas, I'm glad that we found some nice dills, because there's a lot of areas that we just, just put a bill.
Thank you. Thank you. Tenille? Are you, no? Mike? Omar? Dave?
Just a couple of things. An appeal has been filed, and I'll, on behalf of our attorneys, seeking to, you know, if we can get those other three counts that were not dismissed by the judge dismissed. Two of those three counts do not, or are not covered by insurance, so it'll be very beneficial to us if we can obviously get those dismissed. I don't have a timeline on, you know, for you on that yet, but it's probably going to be a couple of months, at least. Billboard, we got the settlement agreement on Thursday, or Wednesday. Draft settlement agreement, ten thousand eight hundred dollars is what we'll be receiving from the state. We just got to get that executed, and we'll probably get that executed later on today, or sometime next week, to get off to the state. There were just a couple minor adjustments, and I'm waiting for them to get that back to me, so we can get it executed. Other than that, is there any questions?
Thanks, Dave. Tanya?
Tanya Kennedy, general manager. A couple of announcements. The tourist development commission will host a public meeting on Wednesday, June 21st, at eight thirty a.m. at the Highlands County Extension Office Conference Room Two. They were, they're going to be discussing their 2017-18 marketing plan, of which I believe, you know, golf to be incorporated in that marketing plan. So this is a public meeting. I don't know if this is the first type of meeting they've had like this. They usually host this? Okay, so this is going to be a good informational meeting, if any of you are interested in attending. Also, I'll be attending the Florida Association of Special Districts Annual Conference in Orlando, next week, June 14th and 15th. Speaking of marketing, I know myself and Jim and Tenille, we all met last week to discuss our continued efforts of marketing through Facebook and social media. So, there's a, there's a lot of knowledge here, there's a lot of education that goes along with it, so we're looking into that. And we started this marketing, I think, several years ago with Facebook, so we're seeing a lot of positive, but we want to continue those efforts. A couple other things, we are preparing the bid specifications for the billboard, so as soon as we have that, the bid together and advertised, I will let you know. It's going to take us a little time to put that together. We are concerned about the safety of our utility water plant employees. Two weeks ago, we had some instances where our employee was almost hit two times by a golf ball. And we don't normally see this, you know, maybe during PGA time, when we have people that do hit that far, but he was almost hit in the head. And so we have a concern, we might be looking into possibility of a net outside the utility plant area. The district roof replacement is coming along, hopefully no rain today. I mean, I'm not discouraging rain, I just, we've had multiple leaks in our building, and we'd like, you know, for the contractor to move forward as fast as they can with the roof. One more thing, our roads and drainage crews, they're performing some ditch maintenance between Torega Street and Boston Street, and that's in unit four. The residents there have been, sent a letter, you know, of the maintenance. We do have some fences and some other things that have encroached into the easement area, but our crews will be working this summer to do some clearing in that back ditch. That's it.
Thank you. Unfinished business?
None.
New business?
None.
Committee reports?
No committee reports.
Public comment?
Hello, Mr. President, I kind of agree with you, I just want to do, I'm keeping things that I like to have elaborated on, and then I'll keep it as standard. All right, questions, paving or shoe makeup? Is that going through, or anything, how is that changed?
Uh, we're gonna, the resolution's coming up next meeting. Right?
Yeah, we're gonna pay for...
It's got to be voted on. It's got to be voted on. Okay?
Uh, we, I missed one meeting, but the cost of the district roof, I understand that there were two alternatives, one was asphalt, one was steel. And it's going to be a fine project, and a project that needs to be done, but I'm just asking, what was the final cost of doing that?
A hundred and forty...
Thirty, hundred and thirty-eight thousand, hundred and thirty-nine thousand. It's for, this is for a metal roof, and they are going to be changing the roof shape as well, yes, roof design, yes.
Well, I understood the total, I think it's ninety-seven thousand dollars, and that in that total area, it's not kind of this, that twenty thousand dollars, fifty, fifty?
Well, it went from eighty-seven thousand, I think, for the metal roof, to redoing the roof completely, to a hundred and thirty-seven thousand is what, and we voted on taking the redoing of roof.
Well, it's with my, and it definitely has the, the, given the debt, Paco, Del Capo, or whatever.
Pizza Hut.
Pizza Hut.
Yeah. All right, my favorite subject was to discuss, uh, other side, and Mr. Brooks did emphasize the thing that a lot of people come up, and they have suggestions, and it's kind of like guys, you know, you have a ten thousand dollar discretionary fund that you get under the wire to something above, otherwise, you want something done tomorrow, it can be done tomorrow. And to me, when it's one hundred fifty-one dollars, and that's hot, if you can get, you don't have to pay that, which is a compromise of companies, okay? So, you know, I just like to have that seriously looked at. But, and healthcare, as you mentioned earlier before, with eight-five percent, and it's going to be increased to ninety, ninety-five percent, whatever, I think that's a tremendous benefit for employees, which was within a budget range, because, you know, working in the private industry, I had to pay for my insurance. You know, I was under a corporate background, I had to pay for it. So, you know, it's a little bit of responsibility there, and I think we have pretty, our employees' health insurance is very important, but let's, I can keep a cap on it. There's a gift, there's a, a gift, a gift. I hate to be an obstructionist or a complainer or something like that, but I tell you what, you come into the clubhouse, and the TV set, all TV sets are berserk, we're getting crazy minds, whatever, and the excuse was, lightning hit the building, or whatever, hit something on Comcast. Is there any plans of fixing that? I just feel embarrassed that people come in, and they look at this TV, and, you know, it's not in good shape. Is there any plans for fixing the TV in the clubhouse?
It was, it was put on the budget proposal for next year. So, I don't know if that's a plan, because it hasn't been voted on, or if we hadn't decided what it is, but that's, it's been brought up.
Well, this could also be a point of order, which is discretionary, it's been, it's been to find out how much it's going to cost, and is Comcast responsible for it?
We did, we did find out how much, and I don't know if it's under discretionary amount, Bill.
And Bill, that's your, that's your three minutes.
Does insurance cover, cover that?
I wouldn't think so.
Yes, it does.
First of all, I wasn't aware there's issues with the TVs here, but on a lightning strike, and the TV is knocked out completely, I mean, we have a thousand-dollar deductible on our insurance, related to lightning, so, I mean, I didn't, I wasn't aware that we don't have TVs working. We have, are TVs working?
They're working, they're working.
It's just that we have, if it's a Comcast issue, Comcast should fix it.
Yeah, even have the embarrassment of, of, of all time, all insurance, you know, grass is not hanging, and that's a point, that's the way it works, I think, but...
I mean, sometimes it could be the cable, we have, you know, the cable that connects them to the box, sometimes it could be the actual cable box, so if there is an issue, I hope Comcast will fix that.
And then, a few weeks ago, Comcast was supposed to show up, and I know what happened, so maybe it's kind of like, let me get it fixed. One more quick item, people getting hit in the, in the work area. I had suggested pushing the dirt back at the end of their driving range, bring it up higher, so when you put a fence up on top, it's off ten feet high, it's fifteen feet high, it takes, I don't know what they hit, it falls, that's hot. We don't have that many people, but that's a simple fix, and we're passionate, because we've got dirt all over the place here. So before that part is finished, I had, let me have that Pacific, it pushed that dirt back, with the fence on top, it really looked nice, instead of a net up there, which is a problem with the hurricane, and it doesn't look good, but it's not ripping apart. I've seen it happen. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you, Bill. Anybody else? Discussion to and from the board? Anything?
I don't either. I think I used my allotted time.
Well, disappointing that we don't have more to talk about, but I guess...
I guess I got one question, or thought, based on Bill's comment, this dirt we're moving, couldn't we move it over there and build this barrier if you... I mean, it'd obviously be cheaper, cheaper for us if they had to truck it two blocks instead of two miles, or whatever.
You mean just cut the thing off the road?
Yeah. Yeah, okay, just a thought.
We use it as much as we can get out of there, and we save a lot of money, but the rest is kind of, you know.
Okay.
Meeting adjourned.
We need a sifter for the rest of them. I didn't...